I think. Yes.
Yes.
So I am going to, Teriann, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Good. Then, good evening and welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority Executive Board. I am now calling the meeting to order and I would like you to please give this following video your full attention.
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom meeting pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N2920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is being livestreamed on the CCTA website. The Chair will call upon members, staff, and other speakers by name. Please speak clearly and state your name before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members participating by Zoom wishing to speak should physically raise their hand and unmute their mic when called upon. Members should remute their mics when done speaking. Citizens participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the Raise Hand feature or dial *9 if participating via phone, and the Chair or staff will call upon them at the appropriate time. Citizens will have three minutes to speak. A 30-second warning will be provided. After three minutes, staff will lower their hand and mute their mic. Participants via phone will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their names and organization, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received in accordance with the COVID-19 Special Notice for Public Comment Guidelines are printed on the meeting agenda. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they should raise their hand and the Chair will call upon them at the appropriate time. All written correspondence received after that and during the meeting will be entered into the record. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. Thank you for participating in a meeting of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's so much easier than me trying to read it and mess it up. So, Teriann, would you now please conduct a roll call vote of the members to determine a forum?
Commissioner Arnrich.
Here.
Commissioner Butt.
Here.
Commissioner Glover.
Here.
Commissioner Haskew. I see her. She's here. Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchoff.
Here.
Commissioner Romig.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Vice Chair Geringer.
Here.
Chair Pierce.
Here.
Representative Allen. Is absent. Representative Wilson.
Here.
Representative Warren.
Here.
Everyone is present except for Representative Allen is absent.
Wonderful. So, the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Arnrich to please do the Pledge of Allegiance for us and ask everyone else to please mute your mics during that time.
Please join me by placing your right hand over your heart and repeating after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." To. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. We appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is public comment. At this time, any members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda are welcome to come forward. Is there anyone wishing to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? I don't see any hands raised. If you need to speak, you raise your little blue hand or press *9 to speak if you want to speak from a phone.
I have not received any public comment and I don't see any speakers.
Okay, did we receive any public comment ahead of this?
No, we did not.
Okay, very good. Then we will close the public comment period and we will go to the approval of the minutes from September 16th, 2020, and ask if there are any additions or corrections to the minutes or a motion.
Second by Butt.
Okay, I got a motion by whom?
Hudson.
Hudson, and a second by Butt. All in favor, please tell Teriann of your status when she calls your name. Thank you.
Commissioner Arnrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Butt.
Yes.
Commissioner Glover.
Yes.
Commissioner Haskew.
She's nodding yes.
Are you having trouble muting? I got your vote, thank you. Commissioner Hudson.
Hi.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchoff.
Yes.
Commissioner Romig.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer.
Yes.
Chair Pierce.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Teriann. We all understand the challenges of Zoom sometimes. There are times when that unmute button just doesn't work. So, Loella will keep an eye on you to know what you're voting, up or down or whatever. And you get any questions or something that you have, you might be able to put in the chat. So, all right. Except that if we're co-hosts, we can't do that anymore. Thank you. Anyway, the next item on our agenda is an informational presentation on the new Transbay Rail Crossing Program, and it will be introduced by Tim Hale and then it will be, the presentation will come from program staff. So, Tim?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's Tim Hill.
Yes.
For projects.
Good.
And I'm going to present or ask someone to present the new Transbay Rail Crossing Program. And so, as you know, Barton Corridor.
And Banjo, you are coming too.
Have partnered together to advance the new Transbay Rail Crossing. And so, Alex Evans is the Deputy Program Manager from H&amp;D B, and he'll be giving this presentation. So, I'll be sharing my screen and I'll turn it over to Alex.
Good evening, everyone. I am Alex Evans and Sadie Graham might be joining us as well, also having a little bit of a technical difficulty. But thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to talk to you today about a mega-regional, mega-generational transportation program known as the new Transbay Rail Crossing Program, which we're renaming Link 21. BART and CCJPA, the Capital Corridor, Joint Powers Authority, began work over a year ago designing an approach to evaluate, plan, and construct an integrated rail network throughout Northern California, one component of which is a second crossing for BART and/or regional rail. I know with transit ridership down and the economic and health impacts of COVID-19 continuing, it might be difficult to think about such a generational multi-billion dollar project at this time. But we believe that mobility in the mega-region will be important to rebuilding the economy. People will still need to travel and especially essential workers will need to. So even before COVID-19, you know, the region and Contra Costa County was at a turning point and calls for seamless transportation, more ways to cut down on greenhouse gas emissions and to make significant changes in our lives and combat climate change. So, given that, just the timeline of this and the investment in this, we do believe that this is the right time to start talking about it. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Alex, one second.
That's all right.
On the wrong, somehow I got kicked out here. So, one second. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and start talking about it because we're transitioning to a new name from NTRC or New Transbay Rail Crossing, which is a bit of a mouthful, to the new name Link 21. And the reason we're doing that is to try to reflect the mega-regional focus of the program, which is to better connect the 21 counties in the Northern California mega-region together by rail. And it's also a nod to the modern 21st century as well as Lucky 21. So, this is kind of, kind of got lucky ourselves that it was 21 counties. And also, and probably most importantly, it's important to distinguish the program, which is the overall rail integration program, then from the, just the projects and projects that are going to happen, one of which is the rail crossing. So, it seems like Sadie might not be on there yet. So, I'm going to keep going. So, until Sadie, sorry, I'm on slide three. If you go back on the slide. So, to set the stage for why the region needs Link 21, the 21 counties in Northern California mega-region, it spans from Sacramento to the Central Valley, down to Monterey. It's home to over 12.5 million people. It's the fifth-largest U.S. mega-regional economy. The population of this region is expected to grow to 16 million by 2050. The growth and prosperity, however, has not been really shared by everyone. And as you know, many residents struggle to live affordably and within easy reach of their destinations. The existing transportation network, and in particular, the Transbay Corridor between the East Bay and San Francisco, is unable to effectively meet the needs of the region. They have overcrowded trains, limited alternatives, infrequent service, and a lack of Transbay redundancy. The result is unreliable travel times, congestion, increased GHG emissions, and air pollution, causing damage to our environment, the economy, and to public health. So, the lack of multiple reliable transportation choices has the potential to hinder opportunities for the mega-region's residents and businesses in years to come, specifically as the region will need to rebound from the current economic crisis. Next slide. So, as you probably know, over the past decade, the movement of people and jobs throughout the 21 counties has resulted in a more interconnected mega-region with a clear jobs and housing imbalance. As this slide from the Bay Area Council's Economic Institute shows, the area served by CCJPA's train service has seen some of the most growth, and growth in housing has only become more intense since COVID. And as shown in this headline from real estate company Redfin, many companies have been moving to less expensive housing locations during COVID. Sacramento has emerged as one of the top destinations for residents from the Bay Area. Next slide. So, this is a conceptual map. Barton CCJPA have partnered on this program. The vision for this program is to, one, transform the passenger rail network into a faster, more integrated system that provides safe, efficient, equitable, and affordable means of travel. Two, the program will include a BART and/or regional rail crossing between the East Bay and San Francisco, but the program will serve the entire 21 counties and not just the nine counties in the Bay Area. The Link 21 program builds off of previous work that identified the need for and the importance of a new Transbay Rail Crossing. Prior studies that led to the NTRC include MTC's Bay Crossing Study in 2012, Core Capacity Transit Study in 2017, and Horizons in 2019. And this plan is consistent with the California State Rail Plan, which identifies the Transbay Crossing as an important link for Northern California passenger rail network. Next slide. So, there are literally millions of stakeholders in this project. BART and CCJPA partnering to advance the Link 21 program, and we're reaching out to our partners, including jurisdictions, transportation authorities, and other rail agencies. You're one of the first places we've gone. And the goal is to have early and sustained communications with our partners. So, again, that's why we're here tonight. We want to introduce you to the program. We know you have a busy agenda, but if you have, we could take some questions, try to answer them tonight or get back to you. A lot of the questions we won't be able to answer because we're just at the very beginning of this. But getting to you early is one of the things that we thought was really important. Next slide. So, this is kind of a high-level overview of the timeline. We're using a business case framework, which I'll describe in a little more detail, to advance the program and project alternative evaluations in a holistic and transparent way. We're currently in what we're calling Phase Zero, the program definition phase. The miles, the planning milestones we're working towards will be the environmental approval of the project and program that will happen at the end of Phase Two and about 2028. And that all assumes, of course, that funding is available. And if all goes according to plan, hopefully be able to start service in 2040. And of course, one or more projects that get identified as part of this analysis may start before that time. Next slide. So, here's the business case framework that we're using to guide the program's alternatives analysis. There are four cases. The strategic case, which is what we're working on now, defines the problem we want to address, the vision for the program, and the goals and objectives we want to achieve. The economic case evaluates the business, employment, jobs, and housing benefits of the program and project and analyzes cost-effectiveness of the alternatives. The financial case discusses how to fund the program and project, looking at financing options and revenue generation. The delivery and operations case gets into the governance, construction operations, and program risk, including displacement, for example. The next slide. So, the first step in advancing the strategic case has been to develop goals and objectives, which will serve to guide us in analyzing alternatives. Transforming the passenger experience is shown larger on the left because it's a foundational goal of the program and it will support the other three goals. Enhancing community livability is a goal, supporting economic growth and global competitiveness, and advanced environmental stewardship and protection. Now, underpinning these four goals are 12 objectives. The objectives are backed up by specific metrics that will allow our team to evaluate the benefits of each of the proposed alternatives. And just a note on equity. In addition to being addressed as a specific objective within the goal of enhanced community and livability, equity will be comprehensively considered through each goal and objective and through the metric evaluation. Next slide. So, since the inception of this program, we've made a commitment to equity, as I mentioned on the previous slide. This is in recognition that major infrastructure projects have had disparate impacts on communities of color and low-income communities. So, as a start, we've made a commitment to advancing equity. Some key insights that the team has learned from talking with equity experts and practitioners so far are developing relationships with communities, partner with communities to address existing inequities rather than just avoiding harm. And our program has an opportunity, we think, to set a new standard for how equity is considered in generational projects. Next slide. As part of MTC Plan Bay Area, which some of you are involved in, MTC evaluated the performance of projects within their modeling. As a result of this assessment, MTC concluded that a new Transbay Rail Crossing is the most cost-effective transit expansion mega-project. And that's why they included the program in the second, it's in the second phase of the recommended final blueprint, which, when you realize what our timeline is, makes perfect sense. So, MTC's evaluation says this is the most cost-effective transit expansion mega-project. In addition, the program significantly contributes to helping the region meet its GHG reduction goals. And now is when we normally hand it back to Alex. Okay. So, when we started looking at this, and of course, the pandemic started, you know, one of the questions we had was, should we talk about this now? And what would the public's reception be if we were to do that? So, we did a 1,400 interview survey across the 21-county mega-region, and we asked this question. Do you think that we should continue to plan for projects like this? Or this is the wrong time to do that and we should focus primarily on the impacts of the coronavirus? And you can see the results here. 79% said we should continue to develop plans to fix our region's long-term challenges with traffic and transportation and not stop now. And then, next slide. And of course, we also wanted to know whether or not there was support for the project. So, we asked specifically about the project and asked if people would support it. And 80% of voters said that they would support the project. 45% strongly. In the Bay Area, it was 84%. But it's important to note that the differences we saw by region were never a question of direction, but was always a question of to what degree they supported this program. And next slide. So, a couple upcoming milestones. There's going to be the release of the Bay Area Council's Economic Institutes, the mega-regional case. So, they're doing an independent study of this project that will be released, we hope, in November. We're going to launch a Link 21 website and begin outreach. Of course, we have to be very sensitive and careful in this environment. So, a lot of that will be online. But the website is also going to be a great resource for that. And then, the award of a new program identification and project selection to support contracts. So, BART has issued an RFP for additional consultant work on this project. And finally, thank you again. Happy to try to answer any questions or at least note those questions and get back to you with answers when we have them available. So, sorry for the technical difficulty getting Sadie on the line. But honestly, it was kind of a joy for me to be at CCTA and to be able to give this presentation. So, thank you.
Well, it's good to see you, Alex. Welcome home. I have questions. I saw Dave Hudson first, then I'll go to Chris Kelly. So, Dave.
I was just doing the Queen's wave. Now, can you go back to, I think it's page four or five, that shows all the different colored transit thingies, lines, whatever you want to call them.
Sure.
Because I'm reminded that one of the last things I heard was, MTC said that this Transbay connection is one of the most, I don't know, cost-effective or are you, I don't want to put words right there.
That one.
Right there. And I'm looking at this map with all the different colors, and the one that stands out to me is red. That red line, we are spending billions of dollars to electrify the Peninsula Corridor. And I see a dotted line that goes down past Gilroy to Salinas. Gilroy and San Jose are in a county that probably should have a population of 3 million, and it only has 2 million. But I'm not upset that they were reduced 53,000 homes in our last Rena, whatever you call that thing. And it goes down to Salinas through San Benito, which you're not going to stop there, to one of the largest cities in the state. And that isn't getting any play. What people are telling you is the Transbay Tube is the physical responsible way to go. This sounds odd to me, but maybe not after listening to that Rena solution that MTC came up with too. And I'm asking, has anybody brought up that route and extending it to Salinas?
I can't really answer the Rena question or the extension to Salinas. But, you know, this, the project, the second crossing or an initial crossing for the Bay for rail is really what's essential to provide, you know, the resiliency, the redundancy, and the added capacity. And I think you'll see a big part of that benefit to Contra Costa County because it's really those trains that are, BART trains that are, had been over-capacity. I think in the state rail plan, you know, extends beyond this program. That's the best I can do for you today, Dave.
Okay, Chris Kelly and then Noel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Evans, for your presentation. So, this is about talking about a second crossing. Is this the same thing as the Dumbarton Rail Corridor project? I saw that explained at East Bay EDA about a year ago. Is this the same thing?
The short answer is no. So, this would be, this is not the Dumbarton Crossing. That would be an additional crossing or a different program.
Oh, would you be proposing then to tunnel under the bay around the, you know, like from Fremont over to the other side? And, I mean, it's pretty high-level. There are a whole lot of questions here. You know, I mean, one, what exactly are you proposing? Who's going to pay for it? And who do you expect to really ride on this? You know, right now, I think we're finding that with so many people staying home, a lot of folks will be working home, from home, those who can, will be working from home part-time. Then they might go to their offices, you know, down in Santa Clara part-time. So, who is going to be riding this? Is it all going to be essential workers coming, you know, from the outer reaches into Silicon Valley? I mean, have we given this any thought?
What we are doing in, you know, what is literally Phase Zero is beginning to consider exactly those questions and ensuring that there is a market for this type of service. You know, we don't know what the world will look like after coronavirus, but we do know that projects like this have a very long planning phase and a long runway to do. So, where we are today is in trying to answer all of the questions you just posed. And if the answers demonstrate that this project isn't necessary, then the project wouldn't go forward. I think most people expect that we will return to a pre-COVID. Maybe not exactly the same, but the level of, you know, congestion, the over-capacity on the BART trains through Contra Costa County was really not sustainable. And this program would be designed to help alleviate that.
Yeah, I think it's important to look at that and also the cost-benefit analysis. You know, I'm still commuting to work and I live in West Contra Costa County. I only commute to Berkeley right now. I don't go to San Francisco. I'd probably, would not go to San Jose even if this were here because even on public transportation, it would just take too darn long. So, it'll be interesting to see what you, you know, your research comes up with. Thank you.
Hey, Alex, and I stepped in at the last minute, so.
Great.
Welcome.
Well, sorry. I apologize.
We'll go to Noel for the next question.
Yeah, Alex, it was sort of a, more of a comment. Because first of all, I think this is a great concept because what it does is different than other approaches. It's filling, taking existing network of transportation systems for rail and plugging in the gas. But I offer one change, actually on two levels. One, being an architect planner, you know, we're advising major companies on how the future looks. And the future for most major companies, and when you extrapolate it down Brick and Mortar store in California, particularly in the, these 21 counties, that about 35% of the workforce is going to make a permanent pivot to be able to work remotely. It's, it's better for quality of life. It's better for commuting, all of that. So, we ought to take that into account. And that's really a wonderful, you know, aspect. You know, sort of the ashes of Phoenix out of COVID, something good is coming out of this, that we have learned how to do just what we're doing now. And companies have found that they're more productive. People are happier. But there are still those people that have to commute and do those things. But a really important thing, and it's a hangover that we've had in transportation for more years than I want to admit. And that's about using San Francisco as a target to send people. We need to stop that. There is no reason for people to keep going to San Francisco. The exit, the mass exit that's happening now is real and it will be long-lasting. They have been a job center because we allowed them to do that. We put all of our transportation money. We spent $6.5 billion on a fiasco to build a bridge that should have been a billion and a half, $2 billion project. I'm advocating, and I think we ought to put this on the list. What would this system look like if we didn't do another Transbay Crossing and we used the BART connection? And we use the BART connection that we have, it's going to have a lot more capacity than we ever thought. And building a terminal in Oakland, which is a fraction of the cost that takes BART and the rail services, and actually links them, not something being ten blocks apart or a half a mile, that's actually integrated next. First of all, you're building it on grade, you don't have all of the barriers to do that. Because that tunnel is ten billion to start, and it'll probably cost twenty billion dollars by the time we're done. So, and it will then repeat a sin that we've allowed to happen, which is a jobs-housing imbalance. That if we want our communities to be long-term healthy, we want the valley to be healthy, we need this transportation system to be the balancing system, not the driving force to say, oh yeah, live in Stockton and go to San Francisco. No, it ought to be that. And we really ought to have that on the table. And that hangover of getting people to San Francisco, to a city of eight hundred, of eight hundred thousand people, is wrong, and we know it is. We saw what's happened in the city, the quality of life has changed. But we will fail, fall short of getting people to believe that that's what they want to fund, because there's no funding source for this. So we come up with the ideas, get people to support it, and then say, will you pay for it? If we want people to pay for it, let's build a system that's logical and smart, and supports all those great terms of you, smart growth, live, work, things like that. And I think the only flaw I see is that connection to San Francisco that is not valid. My seat, being in transportation, being a planner, being an architect, let's pivot, embrace the future, and look for really good long-term solutions. But I really like this, Alex. I think this is the right idea, fill the gaps in. But let's not continue to push everybody to San Francisco.
I think I heard you say you really like this.
I do. Not the part about San Francisco.
I, yeah, you make really good points. And, and you know, this analysis is, is designed to answer these questions about what the system ought to look like, and ensuring that it is much better integrated. That's what the voters want, and that's what we're going to try to work out.
Stacy, do you want to respond to that too?
Oh, thanks, Julie. No, I mean, I think Alex said it, and I would agree with your comment. And I think one of the things that we're hoping to do is to really use this business case framework to understand the market and the ridership trends. And I agree with you in that we're almost, it's almost a blessing that COVID is happening right now when we are at the very beginning of this project, because hopefully, well, not hopefully, we will be able to sort of do sensitivity analysis and retest some of the data, the market analysis, some ridership analysis, to make sure that what we are fitting is a post-COVID. And I agree with you, it's important to think of where people want to travel within the region to support a jobs-housing, to support bettering the jobs-housing balance, so.
Very good. Tom, but? Where'd Tom go? Tom fall off too?
Tom mute.
He's there. I see you, Kevin. I'll put you in the string next.
And then me.
You're muted, Tom.
Julie, I don't know how to raise my hand.
Am I, am I, am I up now?
Yes, Tom is up. You wave physically like this in front so that I see you.
Thank you.
I'll put Karen in the string.
Well, you know, being, being an old Richmond guy, you know, I would think Alex would, would give us a little more, a little more focus, but I'm, I'm a little skeptical of this whole southern crossing thing. You know, right now, there are three bridges plus the land link that goes down through San Jose, linking Alameda County and the West Bay. And, you know, having spent a lot of time with people from MTC trying to figure out how to squeeze out more traffic on the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge, I, I know that, that all of these bridges have, they have potentially unused capacity. And so I just want to make a pitch, I think, one thing. So in the, in the, in the North Bay, like between Contra Costa County and the North Bay Counties, we've, we've got one bridge that is at times overcapacity. And so, you know, if it were me, I would take a good look at putting that, putting that next rail crossing somewhere between Richmond and, and the North Bay, and make that length. Anyway, that, I, I saw on your diagram, you show a potential length that goes kind of along the Highway Thirty-seven route. But that's, that's a, that's a long way up there. And it's not a, it's not really a good length between Contra Costa and the North Bay. Anyway, that's my, my pitch. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, and then Karen.
Following up on Noel's comments, the only thing certain about the future is change. And I think we have to start looking at that right now. How can we change the dynamics of the, at least the nine-county barriers and maybe the twenty? Now is the time to start looking at destroying, not destroying, but repositioning those job centers of Silicon Valley and San Francisco, and how do we spread those out to where the housing is at? And this should present a unique opportunity and a great opportunity, especially since COVID, and especially they brought up that thirty-five percent of the workforce will probably permanently be working remotely. I'm sure when it's all said and done, the new normal will be some sort of hybrid of where we're at today. They all won't be working from home. They all won't be going to work. There'll probably be some that'll go into, into work centers closer to their homes rather than going to the corporate offices wherever they may be. But I think we really need to reevaluate and look at the distribution of the jobs in the Bay Area and in the twenty-one counties and figure out how we can redistribute those jobs. And I think this is the perfect opportunity to start doing that. Instead of, as Noel says, shoving everybody into San Francisco or shoving everybody into Silicon Valley, where they haven't kept up with the job, with, with the housing that's necessary to support all the jobs to creating. But, so I think that is where we need to be in this process, as opposed to looking at how, how much more people we can shove into, into two areas in the Bay Area. That's all I got.
Thanks, Kevin. I think.
I just, can I just say that we're we're not trying to stuff more people into San Francisco. Crossing there doesn't, isn't designed to only do that or to do that, but just to really improve mobility throughout Northern California. But your point is well-taken, and looking at the current housing jobs imbalance and how this could help improve that is one of the things we are absolutely looking at.
Okay, I'll just interject. I'll get back to you in a minute, Dave, your, your second go-around here. That we've heard at MTC and A-Bag, and Amy can fill us in even more, that the intent, or at least what's in planned Bay Area right now, is the intent to run this through the Transbay Terminal and link Caltrain and Capitol Corridor through that kind of a link. So that does have the same challenges, I think, that Noel has outlined as well, that trying to perpetuate old patterns of growth when maybe we ought to be looking at something a little more innovative and, and modern. Karen, and then Dave.
Thank you. And I just, where to start? I mean, this looks lovely, the whole concept. When we talk, and Kevin, I don't disagree with you about San Francisco, but the meetings that Julie and Dave and Amy are in, and I think you have heard some of it too, federal's aware of this. You know, forget Rena. It's, San Francisco doesn't like this concept of the sixty percent, because, oh my gosh, they've got all these jobs there. And we have to make sure that people come into our community to, to continue patronizing those services. So obviously, anything to improve transit and transportation helps that. But we've got these competing interests. How do we figure out what we're going to do relative to transit and getting people out of cars? And then the other side of the equation is the planners, if you will. There was an article in the weekend about this sixty percent. I have no concept of how to solve that problem, but we have to keep, I think, both, both issues is too light. I mean, there's going to be competing advocacy on both sides of that. So just to throw that in the mix, if you weren't already aware of it.
Thank you, Karen. Dave Hudson, and then Amy.
I want to get back to what Noel was talking about, because he's closer to reality on this thing. Two-thirds of the jobs projected for the Bay Area over the, through 2050 are in three counties. San Francisco, San Mateo, and Santa Clara. And we just did Arena Process that reduced the number in two of the three. If you do this, you're producing housing for the jobs in those three counties. Why would they move the jobs? And here's the worst part of it, supply and demand. If you don't produce housing in any one of those three counties at a substantial number, and the demand is up because jobs are increasing there, the price of housing goes up. You sell your home, husband and wife pocket five hundred grand, tax-excluded, and now we've got this nice little train that can bring us in, three days out of the week, and we're buying mansions in Stockton. And they're going to start complaining about displacement. I like the beauty of a new train and a nice little tunnel and all that. But the reality is, we have got to stop subsidizing all three counties, not just San Francisco. This is a mistake to throw all of our eggs in this basket.
Okay, thank you, Dave. That sounds like our discussion from last Thursday night. Amy?
Thank, let's see. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first of all, I want to thank the team for presenting this tonight. I think it's a very important, you know, initiative to reach out to all the counties in, in the Bay Area. This, this project is, is really central to, has a number of goals in our regional plan. First of all, without this particular project, we will not meet the greenhouse gas targets that are required by law. And with the changing laws, we go back to Sacramento, and it's not a pretty picture. So that being said, what this does is it supports a lot of projects. I think it's really important to look at this project, not in terms of the way we've been looking at for the last twenty years, but really look forward to the fifty years. Now, we can send all the money down to Santa Clara County, and they would love nothing more than to, to, you know, finish that Pacheco Pass line and do those kinds of things. I think what, what's important for us to focus on is our county and the workers, and, you know, building jobs and building mobility for particularly the people of Contra Costa County. Now, it's, it's, I think, one of the things about this plan, and again, it's not just a crossing, but it really is an integration of all of the rail resources that we have. So we, you know, we think in terms of a BART crossing. But you know how important, for example, the Capitol Corridor line is to our cities in, in West Contra Costa County? And this would provide that, that access, linking it with the high-speed rail that would be coming up from, ultimately from, you know, Los Angeles. Again, these are long-term things, but I think what makes sense for this particular project is to really look at it in terms of the twenty-one counties. And I think that there's, I think we all agree that at this point, we, we think that there will be big changes to, to work patterns, living patterns. And people typically, if they're staying in the Bay Area, you know, our young people, some of them are going to Colorado, but a lot of people are moving out to these other of the twenty-one counties. And they are still looking to the center, they're still looking to the Bay Area. You know, the other thing I think it's really important to recognize how this project supports initiatives like the ACE Train, the Capitol Corridor, the, the San Joaquin Rail, the link from Sacramento here. So, you know, again, it's, it's not, I think it's, it's not business as usual. We obviously can't be looking at business as usual. We need to look at broader, 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 kind of this broader vision. You know, California Bay Area and, you know, has a real challenge with maintaining our economic competitiveness. And so one of the key things for that is, is, you know, mobility and, and quality mobility, getting people out of their cars, and also the issues around equity. Making people, you know, giving people the opportunities to, to have that, you know, prosperity. So I, I know that looking at the lens of, you know, six months in a COVID lockdown, and that, you know, the huge changes right now are, have a real compelling impact on, on that, this discussion. And in matter of fact, six months ago, we said, we suggested, should we postpone our regional planning process? And realize that the federal and the state governments have statutory requirements that we need to do this in order to keep these, you know, the, the funds coming from, from Washington and the state. So I, I think that the whole purpose of linking this and giving the most mobility option to our residents is probably, you know, one of the, one of the key elements of, you know, of this project.
Thanks, Amy. This is a long-term planning project, that's very clear. There are going to be more things that will come up. We'll probably be doing yet one more, or maybe even two more planned Bay Areas before this project comes to fruition. So hopefully, we are well out of COVID for quite some time. And if we look at the population growth that Alex was talking about over this period of time, it's basically doubling the population of the Bay Area. There's going to be a lot to go around for everybody. I happen to agree that it can't all go in the same places it's always gone in the past. It's just not feasible to do that. But eventually, maybe Contra Costa will get a little benefit of some of those jobs, and some of the people on the peninsula might be coming to us, us going to them. So any other questions or comments, feedback to give for this presentation? I don't see any hands waving in front of their cameras. All right. Well, thank you, Alex. Thank you, Stacy. I'm sorry you didn't get in earlier, but it's wonderful to see you anyway.
My apologies. Alex did a great job, though, so I'm, I'm proud of him.
We, hey, Zoom land lately has been a nightmare for a lot of us, so.
Please forgive me and hope to come back soon, and we'll regularly update you.
That would be awesome. We would appreciate that. And again, Alex, it's wonderful to have you back in the Bay Area. Although on Zoom, you could be anywhere, right?
Okay.
Before we move on, we do have, I think, Vice Chair Geringer maybe wanted to speak, and we have Dave Campbell, and I have a public comment.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see that.
I didn't know about Geringer. Did you want to see?
I just saw Dave Campbell's.
Oh, okay.
It was just a process, a process.
Very good. Dave, let's unmute you.
Thanks for that. Appreciate it, Dave Campbell, advocacy director with Bike East Bay. Thanks for the presentation. Can we see the survey that you did, Alex, the fourteen-hundred people you talked with? Is that survey available? Would love to start pouring through that and seeing what we can learn. And in particular, I'd like to ask if you could share a little bit more about what you learned from an equity perspective, particularly what are low-income voters saying? And people living in communities that have fewer transportation options, what could we best do to lift up their mobility?
If you're talking about the, the survey, Alex, can you speak to that?
Yes. We'll, we'll be sharing the entire survey. And, you know, as you might imagine, I love talking about it, Dave, so we can talk about it anytime.
I think the, the survey itself was focused a little bit more on people's reaction to long-term planning within COVID. And we can break that down by race and low-income status and such, so we'd be happy to.
That would be good to go with another item later on our agenda today. So that would be very appropriate. We would appreciate that. And just coordinate with Terri Ann for distribution of that. That would be very helpful. Okay, any other hands waving at this point? Terri Ann?
I did receive a comment from Bruce Olson with Bike East Bay, and he just has one question, and is it, will any or all of the trains carry bicycles?
Well, it's a little too early to tell. Right now, we're not quite at that stage. But I would say that both Capitol Corridor and BART can carry bicycles, and there's no plans to change that. And we're very supportive of. And we're very supportive of, you know, multimodal for smile last mile. And so I would venture to say that's probably a good bet, although we're just not quite there.
Very good. Well, you've got at least a very strong advocacy point here from Bruce Olson. He will want you to put bikes on any kind of transportation there in. So anybody else? Teri Ann?
That is all the public comment I've received.
Wonderful. Very good. Well, thank you, Alex and Stacy, again, for coming. That's wonderful. And we'll look forward to hearing back from you as, as you make progress in the planning.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar. Are there any changes, comments, et cetera, from the board? Anyone want to pull anything? Or do I have a motion?
This is Romic move approval.
Romic moves, Hudson seconds. Teri Ann, please call the roll.
Commissioner Arnrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Butt?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Glover?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskew?
Yes.
Yay. Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Romic?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Yes.
Chair Pierce?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Well, you know, it's getting to be almost 10 o'clock back east, so it's a good thing our next agenda item is coming up. And this is a regular agenda item from the Administration and Projects Committee. It is a legislative update, and I'm going to kick this to Lindsay. I think she's still here. Yes. She's been in and out several times tonight.
I am. I am also having Zoom issues, so thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. And since it is getting on to the late evening hours, I'm going to just jump right into it and let our federal advocates give you an update. We have Jason Ty here, and I'm sure he's happy to answer any questions you may have. And then we also have our state advocate, Mark Watts, who will give an update on what's happening at the state level after Jason. So Jason, take it away.
There he is. There's Jason.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Madam Chair, good to see you. Let me just say that it's always good to be in Contra Costa, even though I'm doing it virtually. Usually, when Contra Costa comes to DC, you know, around 10 o'clock, they're ready to go. They're like, we got to do more lobbying because, you know, 7 o'clock over there. So let me just say, unfortunately, because of COVID, the annual trip, the visit, the site visit, and the advocacy efforts weren't, we weren't able to do it in person. But I think despite that, because of the leadership of the board, the vision of the board, and the on-the-ground leadership that's been done by our boss, Lindsay, Randy, and the rest of the team, a lot of good things have occurred despite some of the tragedies and challenges front us as a country. So first and foremost, we want to thank our congressional delegation. They've been phenomenal day in, day out, over many, many years, certainly since we've been engaged, and certainly before we've engaged in really carrying out the various agenda items that CCTA has put before them. This is across the board, both senators and all of the members of the US House of Representatives in particular. I know the good friend of Madam Chairs and the rest of the board is Congressman Marc DeSohnier, our sole representative on the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, who really understands transportation from the ground up, from the local levels to the federal levels. And despite his health challenges, he's been just a tremendous and courageous advocate in really carrying our water in Washington. So I do want to give kudos to him and his team. Also on the call is my colleague, Gus Maples, who does a phenomenal job in working with us on behalf of CCTA on a daily basis under Lindsay's direction. So as you probably know, the mood in DC now is all about policy. There's no politics whatsoever. But as you know, we have an election coming up in two weeks. That is, I think, as you can gather, something that is very top of mind. So I don't think we should make any excuses other than, look, about the election, folks. And that really is the driver and all the calculations, as you know, with the various legislative measures before us, both the stimulus package, the infrastructure package, and frankly, everything in between. As you may have read, Congress has already passed a continuing resolution to keep spending at the current levels till about mid-December, when the lame duck Congress will come back and deal with the FY 2021 budget. With respect to the FAST Act bill that was passed in 2015, which provided $305 billion for surface transportation funding over five, six years, that has been extended till September of next year. But that creates a dimension that will allow for many, many new opportunities. I think one thing that you may have seen is that the House of Representatives has already passed a $500 billion infrastructure package just this summer under the leadership of the fantastic Speaker Pelosi. That bill provided $319 billion for highways, $105 billion for transit, and then another $60 billion for rail. And I think under Chairman Defazio, who Secretary Wasaki has met with multiple times, has given tours with, in conjunction with Congressman DeSohnier, has really taken to heart a lot of the things that Lindsay and Tim and Randy and the rest of the board have really pushed forth in front, in, in, in Washington DC to make this particular infrastructure package greener, more sustainable than any other infrastructure package Congress has passed in years prior. In particular, it creates new pockets of funding that Contra Costa could apply for, CCTA specifically. They create new funding that equates to billions of dollars or more that wasn't previously available, that can provide green environmental projects, that can create something that's been very near and dear to Randy's heart, sustainable materials and pavement projects. And I think that's woven through many, many parts of the bill. Another element I think CCTA has been very, very successful in pushing for and under Randy's leadership and the board's vision is more local control and to provide more local flexibility. So all of these things are woven in that package. Unfortunately, I think, as you've seen, due to the political influences in the elections, it also, you know, as people say, is what it is, these things have been stuck and been stymied in the Senate. The Senate has moved forward on the Environment and Public Works Committee with just the highway title, which equates to about $289, $287 billion over five years. They've marked that up in the Senate Environment and Public Works Committee, but unfortunately, not many other measures for transit or rail have moved forward. And so that's the kind of state of play that we have. I think, given that Mr. Biden, if he wins in a couple of weeks, his campaign has told Chairman Defazio and Speaker Pelosi and others in Congress that they intend to move forward in the first 100 days, a multi-trillion-dollar infrastructure package that's very similar to what then Vice President did under President Obama, under Ara. So I think those are the things that are very much a wait and see, although a lot of the pieces, the puzzle, have been moving and have been put in place. But a lot of it frankly rests on what happens in the next two weeks. The we, you may also be interested in the stimulus package. I think you've seen what we've seen. There's no new news there, and that has caught in the similar Kabuki dance as it pertained to the November election. So while there's not a whole lot of, hey, this has happened, but a lot of the pieces have been put into place, and as you've seen in years prior, with various other measures, such as securing the federal grants, a lot of this stuff has hurry up and wait. And so we've hurried up, and now we got to wait. So with that, Gus, are there any other items you may want to touch upon in terms of the AV space and innovation items that I may have missed? I know you've been very aggressive in pushing that on the ground for CCTA.
Right. So I, I think you did a good job of kind of encapsulating the, the big picture here in Washington right now. As Jason mentioned, there are a couple of new programs related to how CCTA specifically, as a local entity, could apply for new pockets of money in the Moving Forward Act, the House's Surface Transportation Reauthorization Bill. And we're actually continuing to work with Congressman DeSohnier to, to possibly even expand on that a bit further to be an even better program for CCTA. There's also some new pockets of funding in developing research on autonomous and connected vehicles, highly automated driving systems. And as Jason also mentioned, even if it's not a primary focus of some of these new programs, there are some sort of green initiatives woven into the eligibility for many of the otherwise existing programs. So that's a positive step, you know, in the right direction for the future, and specifically, a lot of the, the innovative, connected, and automated vehicle research that y'all are doing there on the ground as well.
Very good. Thank you, Gus. Anything more, Lindsay? I know we have Mark Watts here for the state report. Anything else on the national front?
Not unless any of the commissioners have any questions.
Randy wants to.
Want to add on to what they had to say, and then we'll go to Noel?
I, I just want to ask a clarifying question. So the, we met with the TNI consultant that used to work for USDOT, and we talked about a pilot program that allows local agencies like ours to make a direct allocation, get a direct allocation upon approval, a direct allocation of our formula-based dollars, so it doesn't drop in the state or the NPO, much like what we do with our grants. Is that still in that bill and that write-up?
That is something that they are considering. The, the bill, and I think I, I left this out, and I apologize for doing that. The chairman of the committee, Randy's good friend, Mr. Defazio of Oregon, has indicated to us that, you know, essentially, the highway bill is, is not going to move this Congress, this lame duck Congress. What will happen is they will pick this back again, up again, next year, next Congress, and move the current package that passed through our House, largely as it is with a few tweaks, going to the element of local control or greater local control and, and quote-unquote, a direct allocation. That's something that is part of consideration based on your discussions and the team's discussion advocacy as part of the new package that they will move, that is based on the current package, if that makes any sense. So I think that, that meeting that we had with them made them think about things in a different light to provide more opportunities for direct allocation. So short answer is yes. Long answer is what I just said.
Yeah, I think our position is still the same. Every time you allocate money to the state, the state allocates to the region, the region allocates to local agencies, somebody has to fill out paperwork. Yeah. So are we going to rebuild America, or are we going to fill out more paper?
I, I think they heard that message very loud and clear, and it resonated with them. And we are working with them on potential language to be incorporated in next year's package, which is this year's package redone. So that goes to, I think, Secretary Wasaki's continued leadership. And let me make a quick mention, I think, this, these are some of the small things that sometimes get lost out, left out, but are super critical. When the package moved out of the House Transportation Committee, but before it moved to the floor, we got a call from Lindsay. It's like, Lindsay's like, you know, we just, Tim and I just found this, this, this glaring omission. I'm like, what's the omission? It's like, a lot of these new grant programs don't incorporate and don't make counties and county transportation authorities eligible. And so we're like, oh, my gosh, you're absolutely right. And I think that is kudos to a team effort. We called Congressman DeSohnier. His staffer's like, oh, we'll get to work right away. And they made those changes to these millions and millions of dollars of new grant dollars that you wouldn't otherwise be eligible if it not, not been for the eagle eyes of Lindsay and Tim, and then Randy saying, what the heck are you doing? Go fix that. I think that is, that they really exemplary, kind of a perfect example of a team effort where we all catch different pieces and hopefully juggle that. So I want to give kudos to the team for that. Thank you.
You know, I'm going to just jump in there and say, you know, when we sat down and talked with Chairman Defazio, for what, we got maybe 10, 15 minutes at the most within the last time we were there. But he was totally receptive to the idea of us controlling those dollars. And he got it immediately. Super sharp guy, really always in favor of making the dollars go as far as they can and not having to sift them through several layers of scrapeaways. So he was, he was very supportive. So hopefully, going forward, that can be reinvigorated in the next Congress. Okay, Lindsay, you want to make, any other questions from? I don't see anybody else waving. Okay. Let's go on to state. Is that right, Lindsay?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Chair and members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Want to just cover several things in tonight's report. If you think back to the middle part of the summer, August was the deadline for bills to be adopted by the legislature, and then the governor had until the end of September to approve or deny those bills. That all took place. And in the intervening period, which I'm going to talk about in a moment, has been focused on a lot of the executive branch, Caltrans, CalSTA, and others, working to implement certain executive orders. But before I talk about that, I just want to remind us that when the May revise came out this year, that was the first time we had a chance to take a look at what was actually happening to the revenues. There was a lot of fear that the revenues were going to plummet for transportation in line with the reduction of VMT. Turns out, they didn't. And the May revise was the first documented point in the budget process and for the, for all of the transportation agencies to understand that, yeah, we will see some reduction, but it's not going to be as bad as we thought. For example, the projection that gas tax receipts would be reduced by a billion eight over the next five years turns out to be continuing to stay on track. And most of that increase, however, was in the first fiscal year. Today, the CTC had a briefing by Caltrans, their first quarter update on revenues, and the revenue projections that underline what I just spoke to are within thousands or tens of millions of dollars of each other. So it's holding true, and the revenue base, which was grown by the inflation factors, is, is staying the course. So that's really good news. Hardest hit, of course, are the transit agencies. Not only do they lose transit fares, they, they're dependent on sales tax more so than almost any other entities in the state. They have the local quarter cent TVA plus their share of anything that transportation agencies provide them, as well as the share of the diesel sales tax. So those are the areas that are hardest hit, but they've been made close to hold by the CARES Act, and they are now looking at an uncertain future unless we have a recovery program. Turning a page and going forward, I'm going to talk about something that happened last September. So last September, the governor issued an executive order in 1919, and it called on a number of state agencies to come up with a GHG reduction program. And really, in that, in that package was a directive at CalSTA, and they were told to go out and come back with a climate action plan related to transportation. You may recall at that point in time, there was a controversy because they also moved some money around within the STIP, and that didn't go so well for them. But nevertheless, after the COVID hit, the Secretary Kim and his team have continued to put together a climate action plan to, for transportation programs that's going to be within a $5 billion bundle. So they're going to start reorganizing and not reallocating, but reorganizing and reorienting money within that program with, with programs within that funding structure. The, this morning, they had an update on what they're doing. I'll be able to provide Lindsay with the materials from that. They were distributed this afternoon, so you can keep on top of that. Pivoting off of that, this summer, late last month, the governor also issued Executive Order 7920, which is most notable for its newsworthiness, saying that after 2035, you won't be able to buy a car, new car, if it's an ICE or internal combustion engine. There has to be zero friction. But also buried in there was another clarion call directed at CalSTA that they need to sharpen up how they're going to implement their climate plan. So it was more of a reminder that we told you to do it last year. We're going to give you six more months, but get on, get to, get to work on it. In addition, California Transportation Plan has been underdeveloped for the last In addition, California Transportation Plan has been underdeveloped for the last several years and it was released in draft plan this spring and they have expected comments or will be closing comments tomorrow, literally, on the program. What probably the most alarming aspect in that is a call for pricing funding, pricing revenues to be available for non-transportation purposes such as affordable housing. So there's been a pretty good coalition. I had a letter signed by 18 private sector entities today submitted on behalf of Transportation California that calls that into question. And I, and I think some of the tolling agencies in Southern California are taking a hard look at that and will be commenting likewise. Legislatively, I think I skipped over that earlier, but legislatively, there were some important things that occurred for Contra Costa County. First and foremost was the approval of the Glazier Bill 1349 that clarified the standing of the county and the cities vis a vis bar sales tax, any of the sales taxes that might come along. And, and I think that, that's settled now. And so kudos to Senator Glazier. I know that must have been hard work for him to get that signed because of my history dealing with the governor's office on self-help or local agency district taxes. He did a great job. The other bill of modest note was SP 1291. This would allow federal regional transportation agencies to skip a year on producing an F, F tip. And that's to provide more flexibility in this COVID environment. The governor did sign that and so it's, it's, it's the law of the land. So regional agencies get a chance to take a look at that. It did have an urgency clause, so it's been, became effective immediately. SB 1351, and I've only got several more to pass to discuss with you. 1351 was Senator Bill Swan Song. He was trying to provide a recovery and a stimulus package all in one by accelerating shop projects at the state level using the structure at the state level similar to Garvey bonds, which I think I heard discussed or maybe I didn't. But Garvey bonds are the authority to use the authority to issue revenue-backed bonds and this would be specialized shop, state-funded shop bonds. The governor did veto it. He did point to the fact that he already has the authority under the federal program, so wasn't sure you needed the state program. So the governor, I mean, so Senator Bill took the, took that a little bit hard. Kind of a very important bill, I think, SP 288 by Senator Weiner provides statutory exemptions for a lot of transit, bicycle and pedestrian projects. We did try to ensure that it covered some of the major rail improvements, but we, I think they felt it went a little bit too far with that. But nevertheless, the core group of statutory sequel exemptions were approved by the governor and this has a two-year life to show whether it would work or not. So if you have a transit project, if you have projects in HOB corridors that are going to be converted, you can, you can promulgate a resolution declaring that it's exempt under the statute. And then folks can challenge that, but it's going to be very difficult. It's almost impossible. I was going to conclude and I will conclude with a comment on the state budget. There had been earlier in the, in the June budget, a provision that provided some relief from penalties and efficiency measures for state transit assistance. And then a nice package came through at the very end of August that allowed two things that were of note. First, it allowed the assumption by the state, by the Secretary of NEPA responsibility from the feds for transit projects that had, was, was threatening to expire. And that's been extended to, or extended to January 1st of 2022. In addition, the very special SB 1 Transit Program called State of Good Repair was made more flexible for a period of time for the next two years. So that if in lieu of using the State of Good Repair category funding by a transit agency, you can once in your, in your county, for example, if it's more important to use it for operation to cover gaps in the funding or to make some capital improvements rather than State of Good Repair improvements, that flexibility now exists. So with that, I'll bring my discussion to a close and I hope I didn't go on too long for you.
Thank you, Mark. That was very informative. Any questions of Mark?
It's-
Very good. All right. Thanks, Mark. We appreciate that.
Oh, before I go, ma'am, may I just say how much I enjoyed working with you and how sad I am at the departures I've been hearing about between you and other members and your executive director. So it's a brave new world, but I'm not sure I'm up for it.
We're, we're around for another year or so, or another month or so. So don't, don't wish us in the day yet, huh?
It's a tie for who is the luckiest person on the face of the earth. And I think Julie's taking an early lead after that arena meeting.
Well, that's debatable, but we'll see. Anyway, thank you, Mark. We appreciate that update. And do we have any members of the public that want to speak on this legislative update? Terri Ann?
I see no public comment.
I don't see anything. I don't see any little blue hands. I don't see any waving. Okay, I think we're good. So the next item will be presented by Jack Hall, who will discuss the approval of a letter of no prejudice to advance the Canyon Road Bridge Replacement Project in Maraga. Jack, where are you?
I'm right here. Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jack Hall and I'm the Intelligent Transportation System Connected Autonomous Vehicle Program Manager for CCTA. In June, the board approved a framework and principles for preparing an allocation plan addressing the adverse impacts of COVID-19 on Measure J sales tax revenue. The framework allows project sponsors to use other funding to advance their Measure J project if Measure J funding is not available and the sponsor wants to proceed with the project. By CCTA issuing a letter of no prejudice to the town of Maraga, the town has the ability to be reimbursed for project costs if Measure J funds are available and the city meets all applicable Measure J policies as outlined in our Local Agency Coordination Guide. The letter of no prejudice is not a guarantee for reimbursement and the town of Maraga would be assuming all financial risks if funds are not appropriated in the future. Maraga is requesting a letter of no prejudice for their Canyon Road Bridge Replacement Project. With that, staff seeks board approval of Resolution 20-28-P, which will allow the city to advance their project using other funds and preserving the ability to be reimbursed at a later date based on the availability of Measure J funds as determined in the allocation plan and future strategic plans. That concludes my report. Sean Knapp, Maraga's Director of Public Works, is on the Zoom meeting and can answer any project-specific questions. And I would be happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Move to accept. Well done.
Second.
Motion by, second by Romick. Is there any further discussion or do we have any public comments on this, Terri Ann?
I do not see any public comments.
I don't either. So again, we have a motion by Arnrich, a second by Romick. Terri Ann, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Arnrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Butt?
Yes.
Commissioner Glover?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskew?
She's did a thumbs up.
Commissioner Hudson? I got you. Commissioner Hudson?
Hudson? Where'd you go? I think he's dropped off for a second. He's probably one of those trying to re-enter.
All right, I'll come back to him again. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Romick?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Yes.
Chair Parris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson? Motion passes unanimously with Hudson absent.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. The next item is to provide a report about the impacts of COVID-19 on the transportation system in Contra Costa and give us recommendations for the mitigating the traffic congestion. And John, you're going to give this one, is that right?
Yes, Chair Parris.
Wonderful.
Good evening, Chair Parris and Commissioners. I'm John Huang. I'm the Director of Planning. I'm here tonight to provide you a brief presentation on our efforts to assess the impacts of COVID-19 on Contra Costa Transportation System and also to seek the authorities' acceptance of the report and approval for staff to implement the recommended mitigation. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, which I'm going to share my screen. I'm sorry, can you see it now?
That looks good.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, sorry for the delay. So in June, a few months after the COVID-19 pandemic began, staff started looking at in, into the effects of pandemic on transportation, specifically its effect on travel behavior during the peak periods, commute periods, both on the freeway and on transit ridership. We began to develop near-term mitigation measures and strategies to address traffic congestion. The segment of roadways that we looked at was State Route 4, State Route 24, I-680 and I-80 and those route segments parallel the BART tracks. We use various sources to compile our information. This one was from the health, Contra Costa Health. And we looked at the COVID-19 timeline and specifically looking at the stay-in-place orders that were implemented early on in the pandemic period. We also looked at BART and transit ridership trends. According to BART, as of this morning's website, as of mid-October, ridership is still down significantly to 13% of pre-COVID levels and may not exceed 40% until the end of fiscal year 21. As far as the county connection, weekday ridership has been down 70% and weekend ridership at 40%. You've seen this. I presented this graph back in the, in July, basically showing you the flow of traffic on State Route 4 and 24, indicating an initial drop in traffic volume. However, the traffic has returned to pre-COVID levels and beyond. Looking at this a different way, if we combine all the trends, that top light blue line is the unemployment line, which is shown to increase over 10%. And the green line at the bottom there is BART ridership, showing a decrease significantly, down to 10% approximately. The dark blue line and the maroon line is depicting local transit ridership. And the bunches of the lines in the middle there shows, as indicated in the last slide, how traffic had decreased initially, but now is coming back. This is a, a graph that BART put together and this is what we base our predictions on. BART had estimated a low and a high volumes of when they think ridership will be coming back. And we mirrored this range and applied our traffic analysis. As far as the operational analysis, if you notice, we have four, we can have many more. We have unlimited number of scenarios, but for the purpose of showing you the differences, we have four scenarios, the base scenario, current scenario, new future and mini, and future with mitigation scenario three. The four variables that are considered include number of vehicles, a number of occupancy in the vehicles, the unemployment rate, work from home rate and the BART ridership. And if you noticed on the scenarios two and three, the 25% and the 66% were BART's numbers. I have a dynamic tool that I can manipulate and then change the variables of the scenarios manager, but for this presentation, I'm just going to use a static presentation. So in this case, you see the base scenario. I think the important thing is that we validated the traffic and then you see that the pre-COVID baseline and the projection baseline, that projected line is almost equal. So that basically tells you that we, we did our diligence in making sure that our starting point was accurate. So the next scenario is the, what we call a current scenario. You can see already the red line, if we focus on the red line, the traffic, that traffic is already back to higher than pre-COVID levels, which is the dotted blue line. And same here for scenario number two, which increases even more. But however, if we start looking at mitigating the, the increase in traffic, then at least the traffic, we can see that it's going to be lowered to pre-COVID numbers. For this scenario number three, if we look at the car occupancy, we're assuming that people are getting back to carpooling. The unemployment rate is reduced down to 5%. Work from home has increased to 30%. And the BART ridership has started to come back at 66%. This is another way of depicting the scenarios. Essentially, we want to be looking at the green line where we, we start mitigating the traffic impacts. In summary, we find that there's significant transportation ridership that has been in, I'm sorry, the transit ridership has been low. The transmission system in general was significantly low during the April month and May month. However, traffic has continually increased through this period, October. The economy opening with low transit ridership will result in increased congestion on the corridor, especially in the PM commute periods. And the public is still reluctant to take transit, specifically BART and buses, and that will contribute to increasing vehicle miles traveled. So how do we go about in mitigating all these impacts to traffic? We came up with eight recommendations centering around three approaches that involves policy, collaborating with partners in enhancing or increasing our TDM, Transmission Demand Management impacts, efforts. So the overall goal is to increase BART ridership, increase car occupancy, offset some of the PM traffic if possible, promote work from home. offset some of the PM traffic if possible, promote work from home, and also be prepared for changing impacts. So goal number one, or recommendation number one, is to develop a system to monitor and evaluate transportation. Now, before I delve into the eight one, the eight recommendations, these aren't anything new. We're already doing this already, and we're already planning this. So this just brings to the forefront of how, what we could do to emphasize and maybe bring forward the important elements that we can do in the near term. So I'm not going to go through each one of these, but I just want to highlight the asterisk means that we are either doing this or we plan to do this. Recommendation number two is to collaborate with business communities to encourage businesses to locate Contra Costa, and also encourage work from home. This one revolves around promoting vanpool, carpool, and ride shares. Number four is, I think is probably the most important one, is to promote and encourage transit use and microtransit use. This one is also important, and I think something that we can easily help with is to promote and encourage biking pedestrian mode as a option. Number six is to develop and implement an integrated monitoring system. We need to know what's happening out there. We need to make sure that our transportation system management effort is implemented accordingly. Last two is to develop a vehicle miles travel program, and also evaluate congestion pricing alternatives. So the next step is, we want to look at implementing short-term recommendation, and continuously monitor the mobility trends. And also look at our funding. You may ask, where are we looking, where can we, what funding do we use to do this work? We can leverage our TDM program funds, reach out to the area district for additional funds, and also MTC, the Michigan Transit Commission, and also potential funds from our congestion pricing. This is the dynamic traffic predictive tool, which I'm not going to play around with, unless you really want me to show it off. This concludes my presentation. Now glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Questions for John about this plan forward? Wave your hand in front of the camera if you have a question. I think that was pretty thorough. As you said, it was largely what we're doing already, but it's a little more advanced tracking of what's happening out there on the ground and using data points to support that, so.
Julie, may I ask a question? I tried to wave, but I don't see my hand either, so.
No, because you're not on screen. Your camera's not on.
Oh, okay, well, that's why.
We can't see you wave if you don't have a camera turned on. So yes, Rob, you can go ahead and ask a question.
Well, I probably didn't want everybody to see me waving frantically anyway. But I guess the question, does BART have a plan? Because I rode on BART about a week ago, and it was a ten-car train. And I was the only one on a car, all the way from San Francisco Airport to Antioch.
Oh, my goodness.
So does BART have, I went by the Lafayette Station, obviously I'm looking, I went by the Arrendas Station. The parking lot is totally empty. What kind of, what kind of plan is BART embarking on? Do we know?
Yes, we actually know.
Go ahead, John. You answer, and then I'll ask Deborah if she's got anything else.
Okay, I did go on, BART has a, I recall seeing like a seven-point plan to get folks back on to ride BART. I don't have the details of it, but I think it's posted on their website. And then it's a huge challenge, I think, for BART and everyone in all the transit agencies.
Okay, I'm going to throw it to Deborah to see if she has anything she wants to add, and then I'll go to Dave Campbell for questions. Deborah, do you want to unmute yourself? Maybe we lost Deborah too. While we're waiting on Deborah to find her unmute button, I will go to Dave Campbell. How about that?
Thanks, Julie. John, a question. Transit operators are facing a financial cliff here in the next couple of months. Do your projections take that into account? And if transit funding doesn't come back, you know, what's the plan to keep transit operating in Contra Costa County for those who rely on it?
Thanks for the question, Dave. In this exercise, I did not, or we did not take it into consideration the decrease in revenue for the transit agencies. We strictly looked at the ridership in association with the with the vehicle, increase in vehicles on the roadways. And how less ridership means that more people are getting in their single-allocation vehicles and impacting the roadways.
Does that take into account reduction in transit service? Or are you assuming the same transit service, but fewer people riding transit because of COVID?
I'm looking at just the ridership figures. And then that, if the ridership figures are reported by the transit agency that includes a reduction in service, so that's part of, you know, that's the figure that they're working at.
So basically, he's looking at the impact of COVID on congestion, and what we can do to try to mitigate the congestion. And certainly, the people's reluctance to travel on transit is part of that congestion.
Well, it's not clear, though. If transit service gets cut because funding is reduced to transit, how does that affect the modeling versus people's just general, you know, disinterest in being on transit now during COVID, given the service we have now?
Again, when we look at transit, we look at the bottom line is the transit ridership. Whether the transit ridership decrease due to people not taking transit or decrease in service, we just look at the bottom line of the number of riders. And how it impacts traffic on the roadways, assuming that folks are not taking transit and choosing to drive. And I understand your question, that there's other factors involved. But for this study, for this assessment, we are only focusing on the individual, the ridership and the driver in the cars.
Did that help, Dave? You need to unmute?
Not really. It's not clear. If in December transit funding, you know, is substantially lower, does that change your modeling or not?
There's a lot of factors that can be involved. The assessment that we did was very narrow, looking at volumes and looking at impacts on the roadways. There's, we can consider a much broader, a bigger effort when we consider the items that you mentioned, but that wasn't the purpose of this assessment.
Okay, I think it would help going forward to see that. Thanks.
Okay. Deborah, do you have anything you want to add to this discussion? Need to unmute?
Unfortunately, I had to step away for a few minutes, and I missed the question that was asked. So I'm not sure what I can add to this discussion, other than I can tell you that our ridership is holding steady at thirteen percent, and that has really not changed in the last couple of months.
Ouch, that hurts. And I think Dave's question was, what happens if you have to cut service? His question was, what happens if BART and maybe others have to cut service? The congestion then? And, you know, John was just looking at the level of ridership and the number of people jumping in their private automobiles instead of taking transit right now, and how that impacts congestion.
Right. And fortunately, we are caught in a cycle that is difficult for us because when we reach, due to six-foot social distancing requirements, when we reach a point where a railcar or multiple railcars have more than between thirty and thirty-three people, we're watching that very closely in the mornings, during the commute hours in the mornings and at night. And when we reach that, we actually are inserting an entirely new train into the, what we had thirty-minute headways. We're now inserting fifteen-minute trains in the middle to keep that social distancing. But when we do that, that is more costly. So that is more money, really, that we are incurring, and that, you know, pre-COVID, we were at a point where our ridership revenue was at about fifty-seven percent of our total funding of the entire budget. And we lost eighty, well, we're now at eighty-seven percent of that we've lost. So it's a substantial amount of revenue. We are actually, I was going to save this to the end, but I'll just say it now. We have a meeting on Thursday, and on the agenda on Thursday is a financial, another financial update. This time, we are beginning to take a peek at what service model changes can be made. And I have actually reached out to all of the mayors in the cities where we have BART stations in my district, and just sort of warned them that this discussion is going to start on Thursday. No action will be taken, no decisions will be made, but it's the start of the discussion. And there's an interesting map that has been developed by staff as a part of that presentation that I can send out to Teri Ann to distribute. But it's a map of all of the BART stations and the entire system. And each station has a circle that is coated red, all the way to green, different colors, for what, how that station is comparing to its pre-COVID numbers. But in addition to that, the sizes of the circles are based on the actual ridership in those stations right now. We have a number of stations that are carrying, on average, on, some on weekdays and some on weekends, that are carrying on average, or I'm sorry, passing through those stations, on average, less than five hundred people per day.
Wow.
I've taken a look at a few select, like Sundays and some of the smaller ridership stations. And, you know, I've seen a Sunday where Arrenda had two hundred and fifty people walk through the station. And that's coming and going. So, you know, we are looking at service models, where, you know, there are different ideas that have been proposed for Thursday, some of which include backing away from the, inserting the fifteen-minute headways. Some of the proposals include closing on Sunday entirely, not running service on Sunday, not running service on Saturday and Sunday, and then not running service to certain stations that are not heavily used. So I mean, I anticipate that those kinds of changes, so those kinds of changes and decisions have to be made really by November, our November nineteenth meeting, if any of those changes will be made. I think that staff at this time is recommending that we keep going. We currently project a thirty-three million dollar deficit for the current fiscal year, a hundred and seventy-seven million dollar deficit for the fiscal year '22. Staff at this time is recommending, and I believe board will go along with this, that we make no changes in the current fiscal year. And we hope for additional funding mechanisms, reserves, or, you know, we are looking at additional operational cuts, and that we somehow land the year, I should say, you know, land the train and the station with a balanced budget for this year, or with just a small deficit that can be made up with some reserves. But that doesn't fix next year. So there's really a long-term problem here that BART is, you know, unfortunately, just now starting to really get serious about. I've tried for six months to have them get serious about it, six months ago, and start developing plans and assigning dollars to the different changes that can be made in the service. And different, you know, ideas at cutting overhead. That's all things that will be worked through over the coming months.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Noel?
You know, and I totally appreciate hearing from Deborah on this. You know, the BART issue is, it's a major challenge of which we don't have a lot of influence over. I know we can support where needed. I'd really move, what the purpose of this is, issue, is to move this report, accept the report. And as Dave Campbell said, it's a fluid thing. It has to be keep, it's going to need updating and things like that. Our job is to look, listen, and support where we can. This is an unusual circumstance. The variables are out of our control. If they become permanent, then we have to respond to it. Right now, we're really on the look, data collection, and we can see our local agencies have gotten some bumps, got people coming back to their transportation systems. And we can continue to collect that data and look. And it will impact us if after January first, we believe things are going to start reopening, and the world will start to look different. But there will be some long-term, as I said earlier, when we were looking at the twenty-one county potential rail project and connecting it together, there's a prediction that thirty-five percent of the workforce will be able to continue to work from home on a permanent basis, which is really a wonderful opportunity. That's what we're going to learn from this. We're going to get those data and things like that. It will affect our long-term planning. So this is really just a touch point. This is where we're at. I move to accept it and let staff continue.
Okay, I've got a motion to accept. A second. Loella, seconds. All right. And Teri Ann, did we have any public comment on this one, other than Dave, who has already spoken?
No other comments.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion by Arnrich and a second by Haskew. Teri Ann, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Arnrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Bud?
Yes.
Commissioner Glover?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskew? Yes, thank you. Commissioner Hudson, I believe is absent. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchoff?
Yes, she said yes.
I saw her say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Romick?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geringer?
Yes.
Chair Piers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Hudson absent.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda is correspondence and communications. Our committee reports are in your packet. Are there any questions about those? Seeing no one waving wildly, we will go on to authority board and staff comments. I do not have a chair's report, except to tell you that, give you a heads up that coming through from the APC and then to the full board next month, we will be looking at adjusting the pay ranges for our executive director going forward. So not for current executive director, but in the future. So that will be on your agenda for next month. And then, any commissioner reports or ex-official reports? Deborah, you got some, Dan?
So I gave you most of my report already, but I did also want to mention a couple of other things. Also, on Thursday's meeting, will be a discussion of our current ambassador program. It's a pilot program of ten unworn individuals who go, who work in the system on the trains and work within the police department. and work within the police department. The conversation will also include a new classification that is being proposed of unworn civilian personnel who will be assigned to address homelessness, drug activity, and mental crisis in the system. This is a program really that hasn't been developed yet, a job description hasn't been developed, but it will be up for discussion. You'll hear a lot about that in the news. And then as well, I have some good news. I am told that after, I have almost my four-year mark of advocating for replacing the fair gates in the Bart system, that our downtown Concord Station will get the elevator closed off with railings and a new prototype of the swing-style fair gates. So they've installed one at Richmond already. These are the ADA-sized gates is what we'll have to use around the elevator. But this is part of our prototype and research for the replacement of fair gates. It isn't what I was hoping to be telling you by my fourth year as a Bart director, but I'm going to take the little bit of progress that I get and celebrate.
So Deborah, let me follow up on that. So you say they're going to be the ADA-style gates. Are they going to be like what we have into the main part of the Bart station now?
No, this is the new prototype. It is a, it's similar to the, if you've ever gone into the Muni from the Bart Station in downtown San Francisco. Muni has an array of these gates and they basically go like this. Like that. They're plexiglass. They're more secure. They go from almost the floor and up over six feet, five and a half feet. And then there will be railings around it that are actually, I think, 10 feet, so no one will be climbing over them. This is an ADA gate because it leads to the elevator. It must be an ADA gate. But it's part of a prototype. As I said, we have one at Richmond. The one, they're doing the same thing at the Coliseum Station where the elevator is outside the fair gates. And then Concord will be installed in the next two weeks.
Wonderful. Too many people just walking into the elevator and right up to the platform, so. Okay, and they can't jump over these either, so that'll be great. Super. Okay, any other? Amy?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I kind of, I have a brief report from MTC, but I did want to touch on some of the questions that people had earlier, too. First of all, on our commission meeting in September, we approved the blueprint for Plan Bay Area 2050. Now that goes through the environmental process. And the final package, which includes the transportation investments and the RENA housing allocations, won't be, you know, is approved a year from now. But I just really wanted to, I know that you may hear from, discuss RENA or maybe that'll happen at the mayor's conference. But I just want to take a moment to thank Julie and Ty Williams from the Danville staff for their phenomenal work in identifying issues and providing very concise, clear advocacy points that could be brought to, brought to the commission and to the ABAG board. You know, we still have a challenge with this regional plan because we have to meet the greenhouse gas targets with it or we lose the SB 1 funding. So this housing jobs imbalance continues to be a challenge. And, you know, getting people back on transit is essential to achieving those goals. To that end, as you know, we have a Blue Ribbon Task Force. I'm serving on that task force. And a couple of things, one, the whole goal is to get people back on transit. And the transit operators have been working together phenomenally and have come up with a healthy transit plan that all the boards, transit boards across the region have adopted resolutions of support. The whole idea is to really provide reassurance to riders that the transit is safe and that all the health protocols, way beyond anything that you and I would have in our own homes, are being done to those buses and trains every single day. Huge effort. We're also going to be, from a traffic standpoint, as you mentioned, transit is down everywhere. The buses are in a slightly different situation than the fare-based entities like Bart and Caltrain and Golden Gate, where most of their revenue comes from the fare box. Sort of the flip side happens with the buses, that their fare box return is much lower. So as long as sales tax, sales tax revenue from the state continues to hold, then that revenue continues. However, the reality is, is that we are looking at that cliff that Dave mentioned, transit agencies across the Bay Area. And it's really essential that we get another round of federal stimulus funds to keep the systems whole. Because, you know, we can't, most agencies don't have the resources to run deficits over long periods of time. So we really are looking at the fall or year end. And this is, you know, again, 27 transit agencies across the, across the region. So the other thing is, one of the questions is, how do you get the goal or how to get riders back on transit? As I mentioned, our Bay Bridge, the ridership is back up 100%. We don't see the numbers of carpooling that we used to have. And people aren't on the TransBay Bart or buses the way they used to. So, you know, it's interesting, a lot of the companies still have not returned to their offices. So we're watching that very carefully to see how work patterns, as they change, would impact both traffic congestion and transit willingness to be on transit. You know, one of the happy news, happy news today, and we're going to poll the riders. We're doing polling to really find out what are the most important things for them in terms to get them back on the transit. I think that's going to be really important to hear directly from riders. One of the concerns that we have and one of the things that we've really focused on are the transit-dependent riders, people who absolutely have to have transit every day to go to work and to do the things that they do. And so this is a particular challenge when we look, start to look at service reductions and making sure that those transit-dependent communities continue to have transit. The, the, the other, I think the thing that's important to recognize is, again, we have to have additional federal funding. And there are the transit-concentrated areas, us, Los Angeles, New York, Chicago, are all in the same situation and they're hemorrhaging. So we need another, we need another, you know, CARES Act to come and help keep transit from going over this cliff. So the other good news today, it's kind of, is that the Bay Area Total Authority in the Park District opened the John Sutter, Judge John Sutter Regional Park. Well, as part, that was part of the Bay Bridge project when we built the new bridge to do, you know, community mitigation. And it's a beautiful, we restored and kept some of the piers from the old bridge. It's quite a magnificent opportunity to walk out onto the bay. But thinking about it and thinking about the map of Contra Costa County, you know, it is so, we are so fortunate to be on the bay because you can start, I'm thinking of the George Miller Trail, excuse me, at Martinez and go all the way around through West County, through Richmond. You know, the great thing about the bike trail on the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge was opening up that bike pathway from Richmond to St. Point Malati in a safe way. You don't have to get on the freeway and coming down through Albany and Berkeley into Oakland. So for our residents, there's a tremendous, you know, recreation opportunities for our residents. And as you all know, the Park District has been such an important part of our initiatives in Contra Costa County, you know, to provide bike and pedestrian access for, that we have funded, of course, through Measure J. Anyway, that's it in a nutshell for MTC, full plate, full plate.
Thanks, Amy. Monica, you got anything to add?
Yes, just really briefly, this is really kind of in reference to our previous report. I just wanted to give you the ridership for Tri Delta. So our weekday ridership on fixed routes has remained approximately 50% of normal. And then paratransit on weekdays, riderships is about 70% to normal. So we're doing, we're doing okay, regardless of the time that we're in, but we're still taking safety precautions. People are still entering from the back of the bus. So we're working at it, working at it, but there's still quite a few people out here that still depend on public transportation.
Very good. Thank you, Monica. Tom Butt, you have a comment?
Brought this up during the COVID effect on transportation report. But if you haven't heard, WIDA is going to, I think, beginning the 1st of November, we're going to reduce ferry fares on all routes to a dollar. And kids are going to ride free. And I don't know how long it's going to last, at least a month, maybe longer. You know, their ridership is way, way down. There's, you know, there's almost nobody riding ferries anymore, which is really sad because that's the one, one public transportation mode can really spread out. So anyway, the other thing is, we just found out today, there was a California Transportation Commission meeting today and Richmond got a $725,000 grant for bicycle and pedestrian connections between the bridge and, and the ferry terminal and things, and other things in South Richmond. It was, this was a active transportation program, quick build project pilot program. We got the second highest grant in the state.
That is awesome. Congratulations. Lots of applause going around the room. That's really cool. Very good. Okay, if there's no other commissioner comments, I will go to Randy and ask Randy to provide his report.
Thank you, Chair Pierce. Commissioners, one, we met with Michael Carlson, who works for JP Morgan. I met him when I sat on the commission, when I was the district director in District 4. He did a lot of bond sales for MTC, for BADA in those days. And now he was with Citibank in those days. Now he's with JP Morgan. But he came in and met with Brian and I. And as we have suspected, there's some room in there for refinancing. We don't know exactly what that number is. But we can refinance the existing debt and save some money. But he also proposed that, an option of, there are the large agencies, I guess is the right term, the large houses that hold our debt. They like that taxes at municipal bond debt. They want to hold it. And so maybe instead of refinancing, they'll extend the terms and we can squeeze out some more dollars out of that to help us with our cash flow process. So stay tuned for that. So we started the discussions about what are the options for us? Because we know we can refinance, but how are we going to do that? And save money on the refinancing and all that, too. So there might be an option to do that. And then, for the first time, I met with Singapore people talking about how to, how are AV regulations, how should the AV regulations be written for various scenarios? And I didn't go to Singapore. I was here. So it was really early in the morning, but I was participating, talking to the folks from Singapore. And then Peter and I met with a couple of folks. I met her when she worked for a different firm and now she's with the Transportation Department in Melbourne. And they are working on this mobility as a service concept. And so they wanted to check in to see how we are doing. And then we are going to talk to them as we progress with this mobility as a service app. So it won't just be checking in with, let's say, Dallas. We can check in also with our friends from overseas to see how well we're doing. And so it just seems like with the pandemic, there are some bad spots about the pandemic. But there's also some advantages of being able to meet now and coordinate your clocks so that you can actually meet at the right time and meet with folks that are in a whole different time zone across the world. So that's all that I have. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Randy?
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're good. Very good. The next item on the agenda is the calendar. They are in your packet unless anyone has anything further. We are adjourned to our next regular meeting on November 18th. So we will see you then. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Bye.
Thanks, Teri Ann.
Thank you.